So, so you can go into the first things. So, so it's an issue, so, but, but the way the law is working, it says that the expression where the shouts and the requests. So a voter can make that request, but there's no way. You know, it just makes it somewhat of an issue. We're gonna have the coworkers who are volunteers who have no idea what other ways to administer that request. And voters who try to find that kind of responsibility. But even someone doesn't fulfill what the law requires. So again, we're here for our elections. I know some of our leaders. Oh, well, and I agree, but no whole, we follow where the S O S and A G's office decide to recommend to others. We just want to go beyond us to make sure that Brookfield and Tupperboro, I think that. And Brookfield and Tupperboro, they understand that, that our moderator make sure that when they do their training, these pretty little coworkers are really able to be there. If that works, then they know what to do, but it just keeps wanting people in the issue, you know, issues and paths where they're required to. Mic check, one, two, one, two, one, two. Um, okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven oh seven, sorry, seven oh one. Um, we already did our non-public, um, Dr. Beth opened a meeting at six o'clock for that, but I'm calling our public meeting quarter. And we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance, and Nate, do you wanna leave the pledge? Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, and we are going to start this meeting with a student presentation from Ameswood Robotics, Resistance. You guys have the floor.
Alright, so, what is this pledge? Can you have the other guy?
Yeah.
Alright, my name's Jim Sedimer, I'm a, I teach math and robotics at the high school. Um, I am also the district coordinator for robotics. So I work on helping to create and maintain robotics teams in our high school, middle school, and elementary schools. Um, as well as do a lot of the grant writing that we do to try to fund these programs. Um, with that being said, our, our team has a goal, as a high school team does, and they'll talk about this, a lot of the outreach that they do. But we have a goal of trying to create a team in, in all of the Governor Wentworth School District, uh, schools plus Middleton. And with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to my students to talk about.
Alright, so good evening, we are all seniors from the F R C Team four nine five, Resistance. I'm Oliver, this is Nathaniel, and that's Evelyn. And today we would like to tell you a little bit about our team and what we do. At our current standpoint, we have thirteen members, but that number will rise as the school year continues. Our team is unlike most high school teams as it meets all year round and participates in competitions throughout. Whether they are off-season events or regular season events, we continue to work around the clock. Our official season starts January, and competitions that are held for ranking points and official matches are held in March, with our season officially ending in April. Looking at this means that we only have a six-week-long period to plan, build, code, and practice everything for one season's competition.
Now, First's program that we compete in, it seems a global nonprofit for parenting kids for careers in STEM fields from ages four to eighteen. With the combination of a sport and teamwork skills, as well as hands-on learning, from First Tactical League to First Tech Challenge and First Robotics Competition. First programs are notorious for producing some of the most outstanding students, including some of her own. This is an award called the Dean's List, and it demonstrates a singular student's willingness to help and learn with their team. In total, we have four nominees across two levels, and two of those students had the chance to compete at the national level. Robots, of course, is being, uh, central, but it's not the most important of what we do. For example, one of the most prestigious awards that can be won at First Community is not about robotics, but it's about the Impact Award. The Impact Award is rather what you have done for the community. To spread the word, word, uh, of First, to make people believe in the boardage just as much as we do. This year, we have won our Impact Award interview and received this award from our Pine Tree event. Altogether, it's amazing victory, and we couldn't be happier. That's where we, last year we competed in three, three preseason competitions, Battle of Bay, Girls Behind Glass, and Governor's Cup. From both Battle of Bay and Girls Behind Glass, we came away with the victory. On the winning line, stating home trophies, where at Governor's Cup, we actually came away with the judges' award for a pres- or presentation on STEM learning lesson that we created. Although a few years back, we actually did win the Governor's Cup award.
So this year was a very important year for the team, as it was the first year that we had made it to the district champion outside of our rookie year. Other than that, we competed in three qualifying events. At the Salem Event, we were alliance captains, where we built teams of the best teams to try and beat other alliances. At our Pine Tree event, as we mentioned, we won the most prestigious award, the Impact Award. And at U N H, being our last qualifying event, we brought and helped set up our Unified Team, which we set up in the fall in order to allow our neurologically diverse students at our high school to participate in STEM at an approachable level. We were overjoyed to see them show people what they had worked on with just as much passion as we see in our level. D C M P, our final event of the season, was the largest event that this set of members and mentors had ever attended. Since our rookie year in twenty fourteen, we have not had the privilege of qualifying to go back, but since we won the Impact Award, we were able to go.
And speaking of the Impact Award, we wanted to share some of what we had and did to earn this award. We started off, we started off, so we helped to maintain and even start sixteen First Teams, including one Discovery Team, five Explorer Teams, seven Challenge Teams, two F T C Teams, and our newest, which is our Unified Team. Together, over the years, we as the high schoolers have begun to mentor these younger teams, thus maintaining them. We participated in mentoring over fourteen teams all over the school district, including two teams at our own level, F R C, one of which is Brewster. We personally have three teams that we are hosting ourselves at the Maker's Mill, we are comple- which are completely student-run. We have also integrated some of our needs into student learning in our own school. With the hosting of our qualifier, we have, we have to make trophies, and rather than order them, we have decided to integrate trophy design and themes of which every First Season has with the tech education class. The qualifier is run for the youngest level, or one of the younger levels, F L L, and is all student organized and has adult volunteers. We also run an escape room on the last night of Wolfboro as an activity for families to come and enjoy, and has been very popular throughout the years. Another large thing is our STEM lessons that we have created. We have created ninety-minute lessons that we, that can be taught to classrooms about STEM. They are designed so that our teams can come, so that our team, our personal team, can come and teach them to the students. We have also had held STEM fairs at the local schools, with a simple intro to programming and even Lego building stations just to introduce students and teachers to the world of robotics. In one fall day last year, we held three fairs at three different schools, introducing over four hundred district students to STEM. We were so popular at the Carpenter STEM Fair that they even asked us to come back for one of their after-school parent and student nights. Now, for just one last taste of our community outreach, birthday cake boxes. For one of our team's largest benefices, benefits is money. Our team's largest belief is money should not be an obstacle to do something that you love. That is another part of why we challenge ourselves to make enough with sponsoring and fundraising that even late-night meals and even a team, team member shirt won't cost a member a dime for our team. That is why we have partnered with Knights Against Hunger, which many of our team members participate in, with our own idea starting to distribute birthday, birthday cakes. Because every kid deserves a birthday cake. The robotics team packs an aluminum baking pan with a handwritten birthday card from, from the robotics team, candles, sprinkles, frosting, and a cake box mix, and a soda can, yes, a soda can. It is tested that making a boxed cake mix with a soda can can work instead of the eggs or the milk and even the oil that you would need, but the best part is that it doesn't spoil. And yes, we have tested it, yes, it is good.
Alright, so to end the night off, we just wanted to say a quick thank you to all our sponsors for supporting us. We have Keeson Remodeling, the Department of Education, Hydrochem Corporation, Hancock Lumber, the Y M C A, Melvin Village Marina, the Van Der Heiden Foundation, of course, Governor Wentworth Regional School District, Turbo Cam, Putters Village, Rollinsburg Oven Pizza, Stephen Clark M D, Riley's Hardware, the Happy Fosser and Harbor Freight Tools, and Barclays Painting, because our team wouldn't be possible without the support that we have gotten from this wonderful community that we're a part of. So to hear more from us, you can sign up from our newsletter, which you can find at our email, which we release bi-weekly during our build season, which starts in January, so you can keep up with what our team's doing. Or you can follow us, of course, on our Instagram, Facebook, or keep up with us on our website. Thank you so much for the time that you've given us tonight. Also, if you guys have any questions, you could feel free to ask us. Yeah, no problem.
No, I, I think it's great, I, I helped run the team in Effingham for, and you guys did a great job at the event, you know, holding the event here last year. Um, now, you guys do all the fundraising yourself, do you get anything from the district?
Yes, we, we do get some from the district, but a lot of our money does come from fundraising. We also did grants too, like, we applied to grants, so we got, we got a few hundred dollars for our Impact Award, which helps us sponsor, like, helping these teams run and also our STEM fairs.
And speaking of our judges' award that we won at Governor's Cup, uh, we presented our STEM lessons, and part of it was, they saw our STEM lessons and decided, like, that, they sent us, like, some grant information that we could fill out because of what we were doing. And so we applied for that, and we got some money for that, which is really cool.
Thanks, that's great, just, just checking, I, I didn't know if, like, you fell into, like, the athletics where you would get money and stuff like that, that, no, tougher.
We get some money to help cover our registration fees, but it's not covering all of the registration fees for robotics, which will get pretty expensive.
Any other questions? Danielle?
Hey, um, yeah, I just wanna thank you guys, that was a great presentation. Um, it's also a really heartening to hear that you are able to fundraise and that you're thinking about people who might not be able to participate. Like, I was a kid who could not do everything in school I would have wanted to do. Um, and also even just, like, with the birthday boxes and to, um, kind of have that, like, ethical framework is really lovely, and so, great.
Um, yeah, what would you like to know specifically, like? Just all of it, okay, so the robotics team, okay, so the robotics team had an idea, basically, we saw a video where someone mixed in, like, a soda can, like, for example, we do, I, it's chocolate cake, chocolate cake box mix, and, um, a Diet Coke, and they mixed that together, and it, you just put it in the oven and it makes a cake. And we were like, that'd be a really good idea for homes that can't have, like, things that might be able to perish and stuff like that. We also have our alternative things, like, um, mug cakes as well for homes that might not have ovens and stuff like that.
Yeah, and just to send those out, we partnered with Knights Against Hunger, which is an organization at our school, that already, we are student-run, and we send out weekly food bags to kids that are food insecure. So we just document everyone's birthday, and that gets sent out during their birthday week with the weekly food bags that they're already receiving.
Any other comments or questions? Thank, um, thank you so much for your presentation, thank you for all the, everything you do for.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us.
As they're clearing up, um, agenda review, Dr. Eric Kelly, do you have anything to add to the agenda? I have nothing, anyone else have anything to add to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the acceptance of minutes. And our first set of minutes for acceptance are the Community Relations Committee meeting, um, of July thirtieth. And, uh, the members present there were Tom Bickford, Dr. Manning, Nate Williams, and Dr. Schechler. Is there a motion amongst any of those to accept the minutes as presented, or any edits? Moved by Dr. Beth, seconded by Nate. Um, Kathy, if you could call the roll once you're ready for the committee members?
Yes.
Motion passes for nothing unanimous. Our next set of meeting minutes is for the Academic Affairs Committee meeting of August fourth. And, um, those present at the meeting were Tom Bickford, Daniel Van Dusen, uh, Dr. Beth Schechler, and Mary Shiller. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented, or any edits?
Second.
Moved by Danielle, seconded by Dr. Beth, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, if you could call the roll once you're ready, please, of the committee members? Motion passes unanimous for nothing. And we'll now move on to the Governor Wentworth, uh, School Board meeting of August fourth at Brookfield. And those present were everyone, Tom Bickford, Kirsten Burke, myself, Kayla Hewitt, Dr. Jim Manning, Mary Shiller, um, Dr. Schechler, uh, Daniel Van Dusen, and Nate Williams. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented, or any edits? Moved by Dr. Schechler, seconded by Mary Shiller. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, call the roll, please. Aye. Um, next, we have our August fifteenth School Board hearing, uh, meeting minutes. Um, those present were Tom Bickford, myself, Kayla Hewitt, Dr. Jim Manning, and Mary Shiller. So would anyone who was present, uh, make a motion to accept the minutes as presented, or does anyone have any edits? Moved by Mary, seconded by Nate. I don't think you were present, though. The fifteenth. I mean, you can still second, but that's. No, that's the eighteenth, but that's okay. Um, motion by Mary, seconded by Nate, is there any edits or discussion? Okay, seeing none, um, if you would call the roll, Kathy, please. Aye. Okay, left hash, those five to nothing. Um, we'll move on to our August eighteenth committee meeting minutes. Um, School Board meeting, uh, August eighteenth, and those present were Tom Bickford, Kirsten Burke, myself, Kayla Hewitt, Dr. Jim Manning, Mary Shiller, Dr. Beth Schechler, Daniel Van Dusen, and Nate Williams. Um, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented, or any edits? Moved by Dr. Beth. Seconded by Kayla? What thought I heard, so there's a motion and second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, Kathy, please. Aye. And our last set of meeting minutes is the Human Resources Committee meeting of August twenty-second. Uh, those present were myself, Mary Shiller, Daniel Van Dusen, and Dr. Beth Schechler. Um, if there, there's a motion from those present at the meeting, um, or any edits? Moved by Mary, seconded by Dr. Beth, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, if you could call the roll, please. Aye. Motion passes unanimous for nothing, and our manifest approval for tonight manifests as in the total of five million, six hundred twenty thousand, two hundred ten dollars, and seventy-five cents. Is there a motion to accept the manifest as presented? Moved by Dr. Jim. Seconded by Mary Shiller. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you would call the roll once you're ready, Kathy, please. Aye. Motion passes unanimous, nine to nothing, and we are now on to public input. Um, three minutes per individual, unless extended by a vote of the board, total period of fifteen minutes. We ask those folks to direct their comments to the board and not to exchange, um, any cross chatter during public input and to be respectful and kind. Any public input? State your name and town of residence, that'd be appreciated.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Aaron House, I'm a Wolfboro resident, two children in the district, one in eighth grade, one in twelfth grade. I speak tonight not only as a taxpayer and a parent, but as someone who worked in the district for ten years. Beginning tonight, I can no longer remain silent about what I saw as an employee and what I now see as a president of G W R S D. Since the arrival of our current superintendent, we have witnessed an alarming pattern revolving door staff, leaders, and even board members resigning midterm. This is not normal turnover. It reflects a culture of fear, dysfunction, and mismanagement, where raising concerns is met not with dialogue, but with retaliation. The end result right now is low staff morale. There was a time when staff was included, felt respected, and had a high morale. The current climate created in the last three-plus years is unsustainable, and it directly affects the quality of education our children receive. Recently, a former colleague told me, my name is used as a warning. Don't say that, or you end up like Mr. House. Let me be clear, I resigned because of the superintendent's heavy-handedness, dishonesty, and unethical behavior. These are facts, and despite assurances I would have an exit interview to expand what I just shared for my reason in leaving, none was provided. Here's a question, I know you can't answer, but here's a question, has a single exit interview been completed since your arrival? If not, then a basic tool of accountability simply does not exist here in this district. Despite repeated examples of fiscal mismanagement, dishonesty, and poor leadership, this board extended the superintendent's contract for four years. What warranted an extension at all? From financial miscues to silencing staff, when one case make a decision so fly that the school board unanimously overturned her firing of a coach. If this continues, I fear our most talented teachers will be next. I personally heard the superintendent saying on more than one occasion, it isn't about the person, it's about the position. Recently, I received a parent square message from the superintendent citing the good work that our A P students achieved. Their testing was off the charts, my son was one of them, something we should all be proud of. But nowhere in that message did she ever thank the hard work of the teachers who positioned the kids to do so well. In the superintendent's world, the teachers are secondary, someone in a position who, if needed, is replaced. This is now my eleventh year in the district, it seems to me that the board is weaker than ever, and it seems to be by design as the superintendent has carefully worked through every policy. That is not how the system is supposed to function. The superintendent answers to you, and you answer to the public. The fact that a constituent, someone who, someone who voted for you, and I understand some of you will place in your positions, but most times not, someone who voted you into your respective positions can't send an email or have a cup of coffee with you to discuss concerns without the superintendent's knowledge is laughable. Your position on the board is to hold the superintendent accountable. If you fail to provide accountability, the voters will find replacements who will. As a constructive step forward, citing staff morale, I urge this board to commission an independent third-party survey of staff morale outside of the superintendent's influence. If the survey confirms what many of us already know, then the board must be prepared to consider the next level of options. Choice before you is simple, review your policies, reclaim your authority, and demonstrate the backbone to hold leadership accountable. Our kids need leaders, not laptops.
Thank you for your comments, any other public input? Anything? Alright. Seeing no other public input, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. The floor is yours, Dr. Eric Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very thrilled to welcome everyone back to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. All students returned on September second, and we're so happy to fill our hallways with teachers and students once again, um, doing what they do best, engaging, inspiring young minds. A heartfelt thank you goes out to our custodians and maintenance crews, I T staff, and food service teams for their tireless work throughout the summer to ensure a sparkling clean, fully-prepared start to the year. Our athletes have already been making great use of the new turf since. Our athletes have already been making great use of the new turf since August eighteenth, and elementary schools held very well-attended meet-and-greet events last week. The high school had a highly-successful jumpstart program on August twenty-eighth. And looking ahead, I want to make sure that everyone is aware of our upcoming open houses. The middle school will be on September tenth, Effingham on September seventeenth, the high school and LRTC on the eighteenth, New Durham School on September, September twenty-fourth, uh, Oscepee, Tuftonborough, Carpenter, Crescent Lake, all on September, sorry, October second, um, at five o'clock and six o'clock, uh, respectively. Um, so all of those, uh, exciting, um, events coming right up. So thank you to everyone, all of our staff, for a successful start to the school year. Um, I, I shared a report with the board, and I just want to, um, highlight a couple things. It's a long report, and the Carpenter update is later in the agenda. But I want to, um, just call your attention the Kingswood Field Maintenance. Our athletic director, Vaughn Beckwith, and our maintenance staff and our contracted service providers, um, are working very hard to maintain, um, both the artificial turf and our grass fields. Um, we certainly have had some, um, you know, um, challenging weather conditions, so, um, the, the fields have needed more irrigation. Uh, but we have increased the, um, scheduling and staggered use. Um, it's being coordinated to allow the grass time to recover and grow. Um, so this increased treatment and irrigation efforts, um, are making a difference. So we're confident with this heightened attention, um, the fields will come back to their, their full strength again. Um, let's see. And then the strategic plan update, we, um, had, um, a robust presentation, I'll say, Dr. Hills and I, regarding the strategic plan we presented for the board, um, at their strategic plan workshop on August eighteenth to cover all of our progress over the past year of our, all four focus areas of the strategic plan and some of the, um, plans that we have, uh, coming up this year due to so much of the hard work of our, our equity task force, so many, some in this room, on that team, um, our tech task force, parent advisory team, um, to put a lot of those plans in place, so we're excited to see a lot of those come to fruition. And that's, um, my report for now.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, we have introduction of our new student representatives. So, Dr. Eric Kelly, I'll let you introduce their student representative, although we had the pleasure to meet you before the meeting.
Yes, excellent. I'm very pleased to introduce Bryce Sandlin. Bryce is our new student representative, representative on the board this year, a senior at Kingswood Regional High School. Um, Bryce will bring us reports from, uh, lots of updates from, of course, middle school and high school, but possibly across the district at, at our, um, meetings to come. So welcome, Bryce. Thank you for being here. Did you want to share anything tonight? Oh, excellent.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Bryce Sandlin, and I'm a senior here at Kingswood Regional High School. Um, just a little bit about, about myself. Um, this is my first year at Student Council. I play football and basketball, and I'm involved in groups like you think of National Orange Society, and I'm the president of FBOA. So for a little update on happening so far around the school, uh, the Kingswood football team started out strong with a dominant win over Hollis Brookline, uh, taking the first home win since 2019, and will take on Trinity next week in a away game in Manchester. Uh, the girls' field hockey also started out strong with wins over Palom and Plymouth, and they face Oyster River on Wednesday. Uh, volleyball came up with the victory on Friday. They'll start the season with a sweep over Merrimack Valley, and they too will be facing Oyster River on Wednesday. Um, the boys and girls soccer teams have had some struggles early in the season, with the boys losing one to two in their home opener against Bow, and then coming up with ties against Pembroke and Merrimack Valley on Tuesday and Thursday. The girls started oh and three against the same teams, and both the boys and girls will play Milford tomorrow, with the boys being at home and the girls away. The boys' golf team has had a slow start, but they're also starting to heat up. They've had two matches coming last in the first one, third in the second. Kingswood Theater had their additions this past week, and the cast is set for this year's production, which will be 2013 Broadway's version of Cinderella, and that will be taking place from November twenty-first to the twenty-third. Uh, musical rehearsals began today after school, and they're gonna be going on throughout the week. Uh, the Student Council has also been hard at work planning for Homecoming Week and this year's class themes, like hallway decorating. Um, they ran an Aroma Joe's Rush Bar after school on Friday for fundraising, and it was very successful, and we plan to run it again soon. Uh, from my observations so far in the school, the cell phone ban has been very productive, and kids seem to be less distracted in class and more likely to interact and socialize with each other at lunch and in between classes. Um, both students, facility, and faculty have also had to adapt to Infinite Campus, which is the new platform used for grading and scheduling. And there's been some struggle with the scheduling task, but hopefully it'll be running fine by next week. And, uh, last important date is Picture Day coming up on Thursday, the eleventh. And, uh, I just want to say I'm excited for this opportunity to represent my peers on the school board, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bryce. Yeah, appreciate your report, and great to have you join us for the next, uh, year through June. Um, next on our agenda, Dr. Eric Kelly, you have a Carpenter School update.
Yes, thank you. So my update about the start of the school year was also successful at Carpenter, and, um, I just have to, uh, extend thanks to so many contributors. Um, we secured all the necessary approvals from the state and local fire departments, as well as the Wolfboro Town Code Officer to occupy the modular classrooms. Uh, it took so many people to help with, um, these modulators, to get them in place. Utilities were connected on schedule with water, electricity, HVAC, technology systems, our custodial staff, technology staff. A special acknowledgement goes out to the dedicated teachers who worked tirelessly to move and thoughtfully set up their classrooms with care, uh, ensuring a warm and welcoming environment for students, uh, led by, uh, with confidence and grace by Principal Corinne Rowe. It was her leadership absolutely instrumental in guiding this transition, many, many hours of coordination. They even hosted a successful kindergarten meet-and-greet on Wednesday evening, and then, um, for grades one and two on Thursday. They held all of that outside, um, and they, they kept on setting up throughout the weekend. The feedback from families has been very positive. Um, they had to rework the bus loops behind the building. Lunches are delivered directly to the school, um, because the kitchen is not accessible at this time, so students are eating in classrooms. Um, and I'd be remiss without, um, mentioning the generous support of so many community partners, as I mentioned, Wolfboro Town, uh, Brewster Academy for providing access to fields and the gym, the church across the street, although we don't have classrooms in that facility this year as we did in the spring. Um, they're still providing space for anything that we need, whether it's, um, uh, teacher workspace overflow or services, um, or even an assembly in their large space area. We also have the additional option of applying to use the Great Hall, information on how to, um, apply for that use as needed. On the construction side, we have the full bid package. If the bid is posted, the invitation for bids is posted on our website. Uh, that process is underway, um, and our architect is reaching out to firms to notify, um, contractors that this invitation is available. Um, so many people have, have worked together, and we're about to, uh, embark on a, on a virtual project. So thank you.
Thank you. Does any, any board members have a question about Carpenter School, or I skipped to ask the board, any questions about the superintendent's district? Or any questions about either? Seeing none, we can move on to the Wood Estate request. And, um, Dr. Eric Kelly, and I think you can introduce, uh, the staff that are coming forward with this Wood Estate request.
Sure.
Who are yours?
Absolutely. Our, our teachers are here if you have any questions. Uh, we provided the information in your packet. This is, uh, an application for funds from the Wood Estate Trust for the Kingswood Regional High School English Department. A trip to Ireland, Dublin, Killarney, and Galway. Literature and cultural immersion. The staff, these teachers have put together an application with, with many details regarding the trip. Um, and the, um, the request would make this trip more accessible to students. A request of $10,000 from the trust, which would reduce the cost per student by almost $600.
You guys want to say anything before we deliberate discuss?
Sure. I think that was a great introduction. Thank you, and we're so grateful that we're gonna have the opportunity to be, this is the first time that the English department will have taken students abroad. Um, and so we're just very excited to bring students to the location where a lot of the literature that they connect with was inspired, walking along the paths that Gates and Joyce, um, write about in poems, and even more recent authors like Patrick Heath, who wrote, um, who wrote about the troubles. I didn't write it down, so it's not in my brain. But, um, we are seeking the funds because we have eighteen students who are phenomenal scholars, and the price tag is a little bit higher than we would like it to be, um, for the sake of equity for students. Is there anything that we can lessen for them?
Board members have any questions? Yeah, Mary, go ahead. It should. You turn it on.
I like the time that I've been on the board. I love these field trips that you will endeavor. It was hard not to take fifth graders to a science museum. I applaud what you're doing and the energy put into it. I do think it's time that a school board member join you. Uh, I have yet to go to Ireland. No. Are you gonna be serious? No. Uh, just thank you so much, and I look forward to hearing when you come back. Thank you for your work.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I do.
Go ahead, Tom.
Um, excuse me, sorry. I looked into the week's costs. I, um... The week's cost provides us with $15,000 a year. And that's what we give away for all the different purposes of the field trips and so forth. Um, $10,000 is two-thirds of the total funds available for the purposes of the trust. And I'm just wondering, uh, one, what is the, uh, total cost of the trip?
Um, at the present moment, so no, obviously, nothing has been solidified yet, um, but at the present moment, it's right around $3,500 per student.
Uh, thirty-five per student? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Flights could shift, though, so that's why we really would like to be able to have students put a deposit down, um, as soon as we possibly can to get this booked, so that, um, flights can, um, can all be, can be booked, so that they don't, because they will shift so much the close of year.
Okay.
We also purposely chose this year because we know that the World Language Department, who have done, they've done international field trips for the past several years, they're not doing it, and therefore will not be seeking any, um, of the funds. So we figured it was a good idea.
Okay, so those, the trips to Spain and the trips to France?
Not gonna happen.
Not.
They're not gonna happen?
Nope.
Okay. Um...
Do you have a follow-up, Tom?
Yeah, working on it.
Okay.
Um...
Great.
Um, how much money have the students raised as of today?
We just solidified the, we just got the approval for the trip and solidified the list of students in the summer. We broke for summer, so the students themselves haven't had a chance to fundraise yet.
Um... So, uh, Dr. Eric, Eric Kelly, I, I sent an email, and I'm assuming that you may not have had a chance to, uh, get the figures for me. Um, but I was wondering, what are the amounts of money on the week's trust that all applicants for funding on field trips or other things have been awarded over the past five years?
So, I, I just want to clarify, Tom. There is no week's trust. There's a Woods trust, Woods Estate Trust, that the requesting us to extend from.
Yeah.
Is that here?
Yep, the figures are up, that's right.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry about that.
Um, and Kathy, I'll ask, do you know how much of the interest that we're allowed to spend annually has been committed thus far for this fiscal year?
Yeah, I can give you an overview. Uh, as of year-end of six-thirty of two thousand twenty-five, there is a total of $751,625. And per the, um, policy DDA, which was, which was revised in two thousand seventeen, three percent of the fund balance can be used for the next calendar year. So that entitles this fiscal year that we just started a grand total of $22,549 to be allocated from the Wood Estate this year, based on the policy.
Got it.
Um, in the past years, um, typically, the money has been requested and approved by the board for scholarships for students, um, camp invention for students, as well as, um, one, one time last year, it was, um, an HTI tuition for a student. Um, a national competition field trip was, um, approved and requested last year. I think it was Crescent Lake and the middle school. Um, and then, like, like we had discussed or had been stated, there were international trips, France last year, the year before, it was to Spain. Um, there was a world language, uh, trip in two thousand twenty-two, but I don't have the delineation of what, what language it was. But those are the items that typically the Woods Estate has been requested and approved to use for.
Yeah, I remember. Bending for the Spain trip, and it's so, it's so unclear. Wood Estate Trust, $22,549.
For this year.
For this year.
Correct.
And we haven't committed any dollars for this fiscal year yet from the...
We have, we have.
We have.
In May of two thousand twenty-five, the, um, class of two thousand twenty-five, there was approval of $10,000, ten $1,000 scholarship to students that will be paid out this year.
So we have leftover $12,549 for the rest of this.
Correct. Correct.
It was the twenty-five. Dr., yes, Dr. Beth? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, Kathy, just a follow-up. Um, can you tell me what the typical encircance was for Camp Invention in past years?
It has varied. It has gone from, um, one year it was as high as $12,200 to a low of, uh, $4,500 I've seen. Actually, I see a $16,931. It just, it depends on the year and where the other contributions have come from for Camp Invention.
No, I just, Tom's comment prior was that, um, the allocation that's being requested tonight would be two-thirds, but in fact, it would be half of what is, roughly half of what is currently, or no, it's, it would be, we would have a residual of only $2,000, two, $2,549 in the account if we approve the $10,000 receipt. Okay, thank you.
I think that's a great point. We've already, a little bit less than fifty percent has already been allocated for scholarships, and planned requests would be about eight percent of, um... The ten Ks for the high school scholarships, ten $1,000 for the... I'm sorry, can, you want to repeat that?
So if we approve the request tonight, that would mean that we have earmarked for the high school's benefit all but $2549 for this, I, this fiscal year.
I see what you're saying. So we would have allocated for high school for, between this trip and high school scholarships, so just for KAR students, $20,000 of the $22,540. Okay. That's true. If, yes, Danielle?
I just have a question. Are there other, are there other trusts that come into play for extra virg... I just have a question, are there other, are there other trusts that come into play for extravirginals or is it just the wood trust? Or what happens if we do expend that much tonight, Kathy?
There are other trusts for other specific items, um, the Quimby, the Paul Quimby has been used for scholarships and I don't have the list. I could open up my laptop and see, but those are for scholarships, they have been used for scholarships, um, but they're a little more specific. They might be in subject matter, um, we have a few other trusts for uh activities for field trips like um for skiing. We do have, yeah, there are a few.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Danielle? Are there any other questions or comments? Do you have a?
Just one.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Um, what has been the average cost for the international field trips over the past one or two years?
I don't have that answer.
I know.
I don't have that answer because I only was asked of the wood trust, so therefore that's the only number I obtain and hold on to.
I do know that the Puerto Rico trip was over four thousand per gift. And they were staying in homes, so this is way less.
Okay.
Do we, Kathy, do you remember how much we expended for the Puerto Rico trip? Cause I, I feel like I remember we expended from the wood trust when they came with a larger request and we ended up asking, I can't remember if we approved at a lower amount or we asked them to come back?
Yeah, you, you approved at a lower amount, the, the trip to Spain, we approved seven thousand, they might have asked for twelve, ten or twelve?
So we approved seven thousand for the trip to, do we know if we approved anything for the trip to Puerto Rico?
Yes.
I don't even, I don't know if I remember the.
I'm not aware of that trip, I.
Did you guys ask for, maybe not you guys generally, but do you know, the, the, the world language department, do you know if they made a wood estate request? Cause I don't remember.
I have, I have all the wood estate requests right here, no, I don't.
I see that they did.
Yeah, our, the, the trip to France was last year, paid out last year, and that was uh seven thousand dollars.
Um, okay, so, I mean. My, my comments are, so, we know it's a wood estate trust, we were mentioning the weeks earlier and I was confused, so I'm glad we're all on the same page, it's a wood estate. It's not fifteen thousand, it's twenty two thousand five hundred forty nine, we know ten thousand dollars we decided to encumber on May twenty twenty five for this fiscal year for students, thousand dollar scholarships, ten of them. We know residual left for this fiscal year is twelve thousand five hundred forty nine. We know typically we've asked for money for camp invention, which has varied from, you know, a few thousand dollars to over ten thousand dollars. Um, we know the last time a, there was an out of country trip where they've asked for the wood estate trust, we approved at a lower amount. Um, I guess the question for the board is, you know, do we wanna encumber all this money now and know that we're only gonna have two thousand five hundred forty nine dollars left over? Um, I think there's something to be said about if we don't have at least ten thousand dollars in this account, we won't be able to help fund those ten one thousand dollar scholarships we historically helped to guide and support fund. Um, well, I'm talking over the next, it's usually we encumber this fiscal year. That's what we have, that's what we get in twenty twenty five. You can ask Kathy if I, if she, if she knows.
So Kathy, if, if in this May, um, the scholarship committee was to come and ask us to encumber for twenty six and we approve this request tonight, we would be unable to meet that?
No, that's not correct.
Thank you.
So, so the, for this May, this coming May, for scholarships, that would be, that would go towards next fiscal year's allocation. Because it's paid out, the students have requirements that they have to fulfill.
They come early.
They come, they come in here early, go ahead, thank you for clarifying. Okay, so we're not worried about that, so we know that we'll have twelve thousand. So I guess the question is, you know, we'll have other requests that come here, do we wanna encumber now or do we wanna encumber less knowing that we have other requests that come here this?
I just wanna state my personal opinion, well, I'm happy to hear what you all think too, but I'm an English person like down my bones. And so I think it's fantastic that you're pioneering and taking the department on a broad trip for the first time, it's wonderful. Um, I hope that we are able to fund at least some of the cost of this journey so that we can support the good work you're doing. And I also think that, um, you know, going abroad is, um, it's a deeply important opportunity for young people and it really broadens their perspective, what the world can be. And what it's really like beyond what they've known, um, especially if they've never had the opportunity to travel. I never had the opportunity to travel until I was, um, you know, in my twenties and it changed my worldview completely. So, um, I applaud you for doing this and I hope that my fellow board members will at least support, um, in part, um, what they're, you're asking for tonight.
Can I, can I speak to that for, sort of, okay, so we had over forty students apply to go on the trip. And, um, we had all sorts of criteria that we looked at, and one of the things that we looked at were maybe targeting students who didn't go on family vacation this year or the other year. We were pretty purposeful with trying to pick students who, for whom this would be a trip of a lifetime, so I appreciate your thoughts on that.
Is there a motion for the amount that we'd wanna expend for this? I think we might be at that point, we need to make a decision. I can make a motion for discussion if people prefer. Danielle?
Um, I'm okay with making a motion for, um, to extend the ten thousand based on the knowledge that we're, oh, sorry, that's the motion. But I have a little discussion.
Okay, so a motion to approve the application as presented, I, okay, that's. Yeah, that's a motion on the floor, Mary, you seconded it?
Okay.
Um, so a motion by Danielle to approve the ten thousand dollars as presented, um, seconded by Mary, um, is there any discussion of the motion? Yes, go ahead, Mary.
This brings up, uh, a lot of thoughts about the need for community support for these various, um, extensions to learning and the, uh. What, if we've had the experience or not at any given time, uh, it, it shows a community that cares, I, of, aware of camp invention and there were some challenges getting, uh, the money for that. People stepped up, and this is what I see in this community, is people stepping up over and over again, it just need to know there's a need. So I'm happy to second that amount, uh, I imagine things are a little bit more expensive this year than last year. So maybe ten thousand is the new seven thousand, or however that's said, but I do, I, I support the motion, obviously.
I guess too, like why I'm like, I understand the, the last time with the set was seven thousand, but, um, I think it's meaningful if the world language department is not going international. If this is the international trip, we supported that before, it just to me makes sense for that reason.
Any other comments?
I, ooh, I guess we're just doing this, um, I'm excited to support this because like Dr. Beth, English is so special to me. Um, I would have loved this opportunity as a student here, so bravo and thank you for bringing this to us. Um, I also appreciate that it sounds like there's a good, I mean, if there were forty applicants, that says a lot about the desire for this trip. And the positive outcomes that it could bring, um, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I decided, I had a question, you mentioned the process for selecting the fifteen, range fifteen to about eighteen students.
Eighteen, thirteen.
Could you, could you describe that application process, what kind of information you requested, how you solicited, how you identified the students and kind of like, you know, the granular about how these students were chosen.
Yes, yes.
Then, you know, what types of, um, students we're talking about, what their interests are and how this is gonna help to, for their educational program.
Sure, so we held an open meeting for students who were interested and we had seven of you show up, we packed the lecture hall at the high school. Um, and then as we spoke in detail about what it would involve financially, which is about thirty five to thirty eight hundred dollars. Um, we also described how we were gonna be getting teacher references and we had students fill out an application form as well that had questions, like the one that I mentioned, you know, have, have you already traveled nationally? Uh, we cross referenced the list with admin to make sure that students didn't have any behavioral issues in the past that would maybe make it questionable to bring them abroad, since we had so many to choose from. And ultimately forty students applied, um, and probably thirty were really good contenders and we did a literal lottery stunt at that point. Um, and we've been communicating with the students that we have, we are locked in at eighteen, there, there's a waitlist if a student wouldn't be able to go. So what we won't be facing is a student backing out at the last minute, um, they put a down payment down October.
October first, last year.
October first, they're gonna put down a down payment.
For twenty, for twenty percent.
Mm-hmm.
We also asked a question about what would they, what would they bring back to our school from traveling abroad and both through this experience? What would they bring back to our school and our community and their responses have been positive.
We have students already learning English.
We do.
For fun, yeah.
Other questions or comments, Tom?
Uh, you, yes, um, I'm not against your, your field trip, sounds like a wonderful time, great experience for the kids. I would be more inclined to give you, um, what's been given to the language clubs, um, that have gone. But the board may outvote me and you may get the full ten thousand, I'm okay with that.
Um, I, I kind of, I'm inclined to agree, Tom. I guess my, my second question is, could you describe your current fundraising plan that you and the students will embark upon in like better, you know, too?
We, we need to meet with them, so we wanted to kind of see the outcome of tonight, um, just as the dust has settled, but starting this school year, we haven't had a chance to meet with the students. So the students found out at the very end of the school year that they were on the trip, um, so it's just been a matter of time to meet with them. But a lot of the students that are going are involved in other organizations that fundraise, we are in talks with our world language friends who have ideas as well. And so there will definitely be efforts made, there just haven't been because we've been out of session for school.
Okay, um, Tom, to your point, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the motion to approve as presented, but to only expend seven thousand dollars from the trust.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Thank you.
And, and, you know, just to speak, I, I mean, I agree, you know, I think it's a great trip and I think the kids are gonna get a lot, but, you know, it's early in the school year and, you know. I, well, two kids have gone to camp invention and there's a lot of value in that as well, so I think being able to s, you know, spread it out, I think makes more sense.
Yeah, I think, um, let the board decide if we're comfortable with seven, if we, you know, it sounds like we, um, make it outvoted, then I think the prevailing vote will hold. But that's our motion, I second the May, is there any further discussion or questions? Kathy, if you could call the roll on the amendment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Aye. So we're approving the, approving the, um, application as presented, but we expending step as. Is there any further discussion? I think it's worth the cost, but I, I feel strongly should match. We came to a previous trip, I think it was last year, F and M, um, for, for the trip to Spain, that was also international. And, um, with about approximately a number of students and we will have encumbered a fair amount for the year, we'll still have five thousand dollars left of a fellowship in towards maybe camp invention or if it's applicable to state. But that's hard, I think that balances.
Mary, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, there, we still gotta vote, I mean, you're fine, then I, I think we know how to vote, it's probably gonna go at this point. Is there any other further discussion? Kathy, if you call the roll, let's, we, we amended, we amended the initial motion to change the dollar amount from ten to seven thousand, so now we're voting on the motion. No, no, the, the, we voted, we amended the original motion, which was to approve as presented, we amended it to approve as presented, but at a seven thousand dollar figure rather than a ten thousand dollar figure. The amendment passed, now we're, we're voting on the underlying motion, which was a now amendment. Yeah, e- essentially.
Tom?
Yes.
Kayla, yes. Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary, yes. Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle, yes.
Yes.
Aye. All right, so it's approved and with the dollar amount being expended of seven thousand dollars, so I don't consider it a great trip. I think that's it for your, for your attendance report, thank you, Dr. Derek, I'm here. Um, next is my chairperson's report, so first we have correspondence, so I have two bits of correspondence, well, I guess technically three that I'm gonna share with the board. So, um, the district, um, shared expressions of sympathy with, uh, three staff members who had the passing of host family members. Um, additionally, the Hampshire School Boards Association website now has the twenty twenty five delegate assembly materials available for review. Um, so everyone got that email and it was also flagged, the meeting packet. Um, additionally, I wanted to let the board know that I contacted the Hampshire School Boards Association after being approached by the Tuffton Borough Town Moderator about a change in election laws that will pose some, some level of, um, difficulty for administration for cooperative school districts. And the Tuffton Borough Town Moderator, um, I reached out to the School Boards Association, let them know that the Tuffton Borough Town Moderator has reached out to the Secretary of State's office and to the Attorney General's office, the State Claritate, and the Hampshire School Boards Association has informed us to wait and to see what exactly the Secretary of State's office and the Attorney General's office provides as legal guidance to cooperative school districts across the state. Um, the specific new law that was passed was, uh, twenty twenty five's House Bill one five four. I've also approached the School Boards Association and asked them to, um, clarify the law so then this won't be a, um, burden someone to cooperative school districts, not on behalf of the board, but as a cooperative school board member that's like concerned about this. And, um, they are currently trying to engage legislators about how the current law can be amended, unlikely before the next annual meeting, but hopefully for subsequent, um, you know, hopefully by the end of the next legislative session, they'll have done something. I assume folks would have questions, so do you have a question, Doctor Melton? Here.
Could you just summarize what the subject of HB one five four is?
All right, this is gonna be a little bit to follow, so, yes, so, um, cooperative school districts, they don't administer to their own elections. As you guys know, we don't have supervisors with a checklist or ballot, um, clerks or, you know, we don't post a polling location. Our member towns, so the municipalities, there are ballot clerks, supervisors of the checklist, selectmen, moderator, they, they, they run the poll throughout election day and they, you know, make sure that the ballots are, you know, passed for residents in every town where the polling locations are. Um, House Bill one fifty four made it so then if there was an individual who wanted their vote, their, their ballot to be hand counted, they would hand it to the person who was administering to the, um, ballot tabulating device, so the official name for the machine where the ballots are tabulated, where the votes are ultimately counted. And, um, they could request that their ballot be placed into the auxiliary box, so it could be hand counted after the polls close. Um, that's actually pretty standard in most municipalities if you have a ballot counting device, and a municipality that doesn't hand count, ultimately, you know, typically folks would say, I would prefer this to be hand counted, and the moderator who was, you know, manning the, uh, the ballot counting device would put into this auxiliary box, so it could be hand counted at the end of the. The issue is, is that we only have ballot counting devices in two of our municipalities that are owned by the school district. And the rest take the ballots, they, you know, they get passed, they're put into the, um, into locked boxes and they're transported by the police departments to Wolfburg where our moderator and our school district clerk tabulate with our ballot counting device in Wolfburg. The issue is if you're in a municipality that hand counts where we don't, as a school district, have a ballot tabulating device, a new request for your vote to be hand counted in the school district election, it's not possible for a poll worker in, say, Tuffton Borough to place it into the auxiliary box, because the auxiliary box is in the Wolfburg polling location. The way the state law is written is that if the person makes the request, the person shall place in the tabulating device, but that's not possible. The way the state law is written is that if the person makes the request, the person shall place in the tabulating device, but that's not possible for poll workers in Brookfield, Tufton Borough, or Effingham, or New Durham. And also the, in Wolfborough, where there are ballot tabulating devices, it's very easy, the poll worker just places it into the auxiliary box. So, the Attorney General's office and the Secretary of State's office are going to provide us guidance with how we can honor those hand counting requests. Um, despite the state law not really being able to work for those four member municipalities that have to administer to our election. So, the School Boards Association is exploring possible legislative route to fix that. And, um, there will have to be some kind of legal guidance provided where poll workers in those four municipalities will know what to do if someone makes that request. If they choose to take a school district ballot and they cast it, they'd like for it to be handled. So, kind of a little complicated of a process, but, you know, we've never had any issues with any election discrepancies on, with our, anywhere in our member municipalities or with our school district elections, but this is gonna pose, as was flagged by the Tufton Borough Town Moderator, he is currently un, he's not sure how we would deal with the request if someone went up to him where he's standing at the ballot box where they, you know, drop the town ballots and then the box where they drop our school district ballot, so they can be brought by the Tufton Borough Police Department to Wolfborough to our moderator and town clerk. He's unsure how it's possible to honor that request at the auxiliary box, because, uh, at another polling location in another municipality. So, I will let you guys know what the School Boards Association does if they request any legislation and what the ultimate legislative remedy may be if someone is willing to bring forward a bill. Um, I'm hoping maybe one of our local legislators will help us rectify this mistake. Um, you know, when they pass a law, they kind of forgot cooperative school districts and how we operate our elections, they kind of all assumed that every school district in town has a ballot tabulating device, you know, for that municipality or their hand counting. In reality, it's just more complicated for rural school districts like ours, so, um, and, you know, once we get guidance from the Secretary of State's office, once the Tufton Borough Town Moderator does, um, I'm going to work with our moderator at the school district and our school district clerk to ensure that they reach out to all the moderators in our school districts, so they're aware of how to honor those requests from folks who want their votes hand counted as, so. So, is there any additional questions? I know that was a lot to take in, yes, at that point.
Is it feasible that we would just have to have an auxiliary box at the four locations that don't have a tabulator on site that would also have to be transported by the PD to Wolfborough at the end of the voting process? Or is that not a reasonable solution? Like, it seems to me like just have another box.
So, we'll see if the, if we'll see if the Secretary of State's office and the AG's office interprets auxiliary box that broad, but an auxiliary box is an official term for the box in the ballot tabulating device.
Ah.
So it's an actual specific box, you're shaking here at me because you've probably worked the polls in Effingham. So for anyone who hasn't worked the polls, there is a box in the ballot counting device, and if a ballot was misread or overcounted or undercounted, no, overcounted, it gets kicked automatically by the machine into the box. Or folks can request the ballot to be hand counted, in which case the moderator easily just drops it into the box and you know at the end of the election that you need to hand count those. So, I mean, maybe the SOS and the, um, AG's office might take more broad interpretation of what an auxiliary box may be, to your point, Beth, but, um, I'm hoping maybe the solution might be we segregate ballots and it can be hand counted versus non-hand counted. Um, and have to work with our clerk and moderator to make sure that all of our election officials in our member towns who administer to our elections um, are able to segregate the ballots to honor those requests, but that's still, it's difficult because the way the ball, the way the law is written, it says that, you know, if, if, if a voter requests their vote to be hand counted, it says the election official shall place the ballot in the auxiliary box. And if you're in Tufton Borough, it's just not feasible to request to honor, because the auxiliary box, again, is in a separate jurisdiction, separate polling place in the municipality. Do you look like you have a question, Tom?
Well, thank you. So, if somebody wants a ballot hand counted in, in Tufton Borough, what's the procedure there?
Tufton Borough hand counts, they don't have a ballot counting device, so they, all their municipal elections are hand counted, just like, I assume Effingham, you guys hand count too. Yeah, and same thing with Brookfield, so we have, it's complicated, right, because we have some member municipalities that hand count. And we have some that are SB two and do town meeting by ballot, so like Wolfborough, you know, they, but, and then you have also the, that I believe, Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys do traditional town meeting, but you still have a ballot counting device for electing your town offices. So, so we have like almost every type of variation of municipal election, we have a governor went for it. But our state legislators and ultimately when the governor signed this bill, they didn't consider that in cooperative school districts where, you know, municipal officials administer to our elections, the variations are so different, and most cooperative school districts like ours have both town meeting by ballot, we have ballot counting devices and we count our ballots at a central location, done by our moderator and our town clerk in accordance with the law. So, so that's kind of where it's, so, so it's kind of interesting, our member municipalities aren't SB two and don't use a ballot counting device, but they're a member of the school district and those same voters, the school district is SB two, town meeting by ballot, and tabulates them in ballot counting devices.
Okay.
So, we learned, I think we all collectively learned, I learned a lot about this, I had to reach out to Barrett and Will and I said, well, you know, how did they miss this? And Barrett and Will, they were like, it happens when people are legislating, sometimes for the sake of legislating, they forget key stakeholders in cooperative school districts are often, were often forgotten about, especially because most legislators don't live in a cooperative school district. Yes, Danielle?
I was gonna say, it must just be hard to pay attention to the needs of your rural constituents when you're like really busy, um, having solutions and hunting for problems.
Is there any, so, so I, at the next meeting, I'm gonna hope I have an update for a bill that gets drafted. I'm gonna hope that maybe our board will consider weighing in and asking our legislators to support such a legislative fix if we think it's a reasonable one that NHSBA has asked someone to introduce. And, um, and I'm hoping that sometime in the next few months I can report back to the board that the AG's office and the Secretary of State's office has provided legal guidance on the matter and that our moderator and our school district clerk are working with local election officials in every municipality to ensure that everyone's aware, I doubt there's gonna be that many requests, but every municipality that has ballot counting devices still has, you know, that portion handful of people that make the request and you have to honor it. And, um, I would prefer, you know, our elections go smoothly and there are not people, so hoping we can work through this. I know it sounds minor, but, um, it's people's right to vote, it's their right to have their votes counted the way they want to at the state, because that's how it works, so. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mary?
I debated whether bringing this up, but on that topic of having a vote counted, uh, one of the constituents reached out to me last year about their school specific vote. And, uh, we talked, I don't know which one, whoever I spoke with, to make sure that there's an understanding in the Wolfborough community, at least that the ballot specific to the school issues, um, need to be mailed to the SAU, but even better yet, hand delivered. Because their situation was, they, oh, you know, their absentee ballot, it did alright, and it, it never made it. And everybody worked super duper hard and our, uh, our clerk at, at the SAU double checked, triple checked, something happened. And her vote was not counted.
I'll, I'll just say, Mary, I'm not sure how they would know whether or not their vote was counted, they mailed it, because we know record that they requested a ballot, but we don't know everyone asked about it.
Okay, so if I could answer that question, I would.
Yeah.
But, um, she wasn't the only one. She, and basically said, if she knew that hand delivering would assure things, I don't remember the details, it's luck a few times since then, but the point is this. Her concern was her vote wasn't counted and she wasn't the only one. So whatever we can do to clarify how things happen, um, in Wolfborough particularly, you vote at the town office, but you need to make sure your school ballot, correct? Goes to the SAU.
If they request, yeah, you requested your absentee ballot from our district, from the SAU office, you mail it back, please.
Correct.
I do believe it's self-addressed, t, I do believe it's self-addressed, so it would have gone to the SAU.
Yeah.
It would not have been confused and gone to a different address.
That's what I was gonna say, Mary, if they request the ballot and they get it, and then they fill it out and they mail it back, it goes straight to the SAU.
But it might have not made it in time, there is a cutoff time date, that's.
Yeah, so if they mailed it too late, that's a separate issue.
So, I'm not intended to try to do count, point, counterpoint, but the mail was part of this.
Postal service.
The postal service, so I have a friend who just recently, uh, um, something, it took a month to, because she didn't have the right address on it.
Okay.
In Wolfborough.
So you're, you're flagging that when people request a ballot and they get a ballot and they mail it, that there can be delays in mail? So it doesn't meet the deadline for it to be counted on election?
Would, yeah, I personally will do whatever I can to make sure folks understand it, uh, that they can hand deliver it.
Yes, they can certainly hand deliver it, they can mail it, if they hand deliver it, they can be rest assured they've handed it to the school district clerk. Some people are seasoned, not seasonal residents, but they might season in Florida for three to four months and be residents and vote in any of our member municipalities, so that can be difficult, but they get their ballot, they should be expeditious and put in the mail and make sure it gets back to the school district with the pre-addressed envelope, so it can be, get to the school district with the clerk in time for the election, so it can be tabulated in the ballot counting device.
So the variable is the mail.
Okay, no, that would be, I mean, Michelle Capone, our school district clerk, and.
Sounds like it. Oh, she is phenomenal, I'm not saying that, what, what you need to do.
Okay, she, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that either, I'm just saying, she has ran our elections, I think, extremely well for almost thirty years, if not more.
Absolutely, but if she doesn't receive it because the mail didn't deliver it.
That is, and, you know, that's not, can't be something bigger, bigger issue than us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I'm a little concerned about this, um, because I assume that ballots that are mailed into the SAU have no identifying information about the person who sent them in.
They don't.
And I don't know how a person would know that their ballot didn't get there unless it was returned to them by the post office.
I would, I would agree with your characterization, Tom, so I'm unsure how someone could make the claim that their ballot didn't make it unless it was return addressed.
Yeah.
So I think you, I think you raise a very valid point.
Mr.?
Huh?
And are the mailing ballots, um, returned addressed to the SAU?
I don't, I don't, I think it's just send address to the SAU, I've gotten a mailing ballot for the SAU and my, my memory is you could return address it to yourself. Um, but it says the SAU, so, you know, our, our address, um, where we get our mail and it goes and it's picked up by the school district clerk and she follows the typical election procedures like any town would, school districts follow that and she makes sure that they're all collected and then they're only tabulated on election day by the moderator and school district clerk. So I'm unsure, I agree with you, Tom, I'm unsure how someone could make the claim that they know their ballot didn't make it unless they had a return address to themselves and it came back. Otherwise, their ballot was mailed to the SAU office and it either made the deadline or it didn't, but they wouldn't know whether or not it made the deadline. Um, unless they mailed it, say, the day of or the day, you know, maybe the night before, then maybe, you know, if they were two states over, they might reasonably think it didn't make it, but usually the ballots pick them well in advance, but, um.
So I appreciate this discussion, the last thing I'm gonna do is suggest this person was lying. Uh, the reason I brought it up is that, and this has generated a lot of discussion, there needs to be clarity, however it happens, to simply make sure that people understand, if you get the ballot and you want it counted, it needs to be hand delivered before the deadline. Correct?
I think the best, wanna. Please, the ballot.
Not really, but I mean, as long as you put it in the mail and you have faith in the postal service, you can trust that it will reach its destination if you're within the time window. But hand delivery is a valid and reasonable option if you don't have that faith.
I think extremely well said, Dr. Beth, that's why I let you stay. I vote in person, so, other than when I was in college, so. Um, is there any other discussion on my correspondence with NHSBA? So I will keep the board apprised of what comes from that, I'm, I'm hoping something gets fixed. Um, next is, we had a motion at our Brookfield board meeting, send a letter to our leg, our state legislators, so all the legislators and the state senators who represent our member towns, um, about the bell to bell cellphone ban and some concerns that were raised. I pulled the board out of draft, a pretty general, you know, three hundred to three hundred and fifty word letter, um, about some of our concerns with the ban being from bell to bell rather than being during instructional time. Um, and, you know, our, I kind of thought I worded in a fairly diplomatic way that would kind of stress our concerns, but our understanding of why, um, we all desire our board in advance even before this, you know, this, uh, new RSA one eighty-nine colon one dash A Roman five became law, um, to make sure that the learning environment is cellphone free, but, um, just wanted to get folks thoughts, because we said that we would ruminate on it for a month and then determine if we wanted to even send anything, and if we did, um, what that final draft letter would be that I would send on the app of the board and probably have the board sign. Go ahead, Dr. Beth.
Um, I think you all have both Brody's draft and Tom's comments, and so you don't have anything from me, so I'll just make my, my few comments related to this, um, and changes that I would, um, embrace or encourage for the board's consideration. Um, one is that I think that part of what, um, was dismaying about this choice from the legislature was that it is really an attack on local control. And we were managing, I think, this issue in a proactive and reasonable manner, particularly in building local policy. Um, and so we might consider including a diplomatic phrase within the letter to say something along the lines of that we feel that such matters as this kind of a, uh, policy is best handled um, by local districts in direct communication with families, because we've heard a lot from constituents, at least I have. The other issue that I want to raise is directly about the Apple Watches that are raised in the third paragraph of the current draft, which characterizes the reason why a parent may have concerns about a student, a young student not being allowed to wear a smart device such as an Apple Watch or comparable. The constituents that raised concerns with me are not concerned about their students wandering off. They are concerned about safety in the most stringent sense. They are concerned about, um, fraught custody issues, about individuals taking their children without their authorization. They are concerned about, um, stories or personal experiences in which, um, law enforcement being able to, I, to track a student's whereabouts based on a device is the difference between a successful intervention and an unsuccessful intervention. So this is a very serious matter, and it's more than just students walking off of school grounds and us tracking them like one would track a dog uh, with a microchip, it's not, it's not like that, there's a greater concern behind, um, this issue. So that's, those are primarily the things that I would like to be reflected if we send a letter, um, to Congress. But I will also say that I was quite persuaded by Bryce's report tonight when I heard that students were having more social interaction as a result of the cellphone ban, and I'm not, um, I'm not necessarily opposed to, um, the bell to bell lift, given that feedback. I just think that the overreach regarding the non-communicative tracking style devices is something that we could address as a board. Thanks, that's all I have to say.
Any other comments? My, my comment is, I kind of, I kind of agree with that, Hunter, I mean, not just all of them, but especially the last one. I mean, if our, you know, if the boards of any might ask our student representative to provide us feedback about the bell to bell ban, you know, the students and families, so, you know, we might be hearing from a minority of families. you know, we might be hearing from a minority of families and minority of students, you might actually, um, as much as disappointing to see a loss of local decision-making, the state policy is actually working better than we anticipated, then, um, it might not warrant a letter at this point. I know, you know, this law had been recently signed and enacted and, you know, motions were still raw, but maybe now that we've had a month to think about it and reflect on it, maybe it's, um, maybe it's a moot point at this time, I don't know, but, yes, Danielle?
Um, if Bryce were comfortable sharing more, I'd love to hear that, I will say, like, I'm still in favor of, um, a letter like this, or very much this, and especially like as Beth said, if we can add that piece about local control, because whatever positive or negative is happening in a learning environment, is very personal to its specific students, teachers, families, staff, like, I don't, well, there are a lot of things I would love the legislature to concern itself with, and this was not that. Um, and I did appreciate the letter as written previously, but yeah, I mean, I don't wanna put Bryce on the spot, but I think that's a great idea, since it's new and happening now.
Do you feel comfortable, Bryce, commenting? Yeah.
Yeah, I think, obviously, like, it's been hard for kids, but they've definitely responded better than I would have predicted, like, just at lunch, looking around, like, there's really no phones, and last year especially, like, I think kids were more apt to just sitting on their phones at lunch, or in between hours, just walking around, looking down at their phone, and it's definitely nice to, like, see more social interaction and change, but it also is, like, hard not being able to go, you, go on your phone for, like, a long amount of time as a high schooler, you know, like you.
I guess my, my question too for Dr. Kelly, has it been administratively burdensome to, to deal with this, have teachers, have you heard any feedback from staff who are kind of expected to lease this with administrative structure today, or?
Um, I will say that the, uh, the commissioner, the new commissioner Caitlin Davis, sent out, um, new advisories, and it's clear she's been working with N D New Hampshire, in that they, um, they revised their technical advisory to include that teachers are not to be the police of this law. And, um, that we all need to work together and, uh, to, you know, to create more of a, you know, unauthorized device-free environment. Um, overall, as far as administratively, I literally just asked Principal Familiar, how's it going? And he said, there's, uh, no drama in the past two weeks, were his exact words, um, because there's less cellphone use. And they were like, yeah, it's working, um, I, so that's on one side of things, and the other side of things is the emails that I've gotten from parents over the past, really, several weeks, because it was announced, you know, this summer, um, they, they were all from elementary parents of kids who usually wear a watch, every one of them. And they asked to, um, you know, can I just have it in quote "school" mode, so it's just a tracking device? And, you know, I have to set my opinion aside and say, the law is clear, and that a smartwatch is still a communication device and it needs to be off in the way, bell-to-bell, so I'm, you know, repeating the law to them, um, but I would say that is what we have, that's what I've had to answer for parents. However, as far as administering, um, I believe families are complying with this, because we've, we've met with principals today and, um, asked them, it hasn't, how's it going, how's it been going, and they said, we don't notice anyone wearing watches, so they're following the law, it's off in the way.
I don't remember, um, yes, Tom?
Um, I, I, thank you, I, I think it's great to hear that the students are settling into it well. But I think that the, what the superintendent has heard from the parents, um, and from other avenues of information, points out to the fact that this law as it is, is too inflexible, there should be exceptions. Parents have legitimate reasons for their want, for their children to have phones in school. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody gets phones back, it means in specific situations, parents say, hey, my child has health problems, I need to be able to then hold me, um, I think situations like that to do something, yeah.
Yeah, um, there is carve-outs for, um, the superintendent to allow people to have personal communication devices for health needs.
I was, okay.
That's a perfectly fine, yes, Beth?
The, the law carve-out is specific to students' health needs, correct? It is not, so if I had, um, if I had a health condition, and my high school student, who I don't have this measuring, um, were, and I wanted that person to be in contact with me, that would not fall within the purview of that carve-out, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it does, it, it, it may cover needs of diabetics and other, um, conditions that need to be managed during the day, but it does not broadly cover, um, all family needs.
My personal opinion is, um, when we first had the, so there was extensive conversation similar to this at our Brookfield Town meeting, um, I know Mrs. Burke, Houston Burke, the Tuffenborough member isn't here today, but she had raised some concerns over how NHSBA interpreted the law, which I think was accurate, how the Department of Education, um, interpreted the law and provided guidance of a bell-to-bell ban. And, um, we felt it was, as Tom mentioned, to quote again, inflexible, um, however, and we felt as if, I think, at that moment, that, um, we felt families and students and parents would be upset, we would see some level of a, of a fallout, you know, maybe a clamour from, from our parents and their children, um, who attend our schools, seeing lack thereof of that happening, I don't know, you know, I felt like this was a potential for us needing to respond to our community and to let, you know, our legislators know that we're being approached, and while the superintendent is being approached, it seems like the very niche and specific reason why she's being approached, and I feel as if folks should just be told that that's the law, and if they have a problem, then they should contact their state legislators, but I don't know if, um, if this rises now to the level of us contacting, you know, all the legislators who represent our member towns, um, that's just my opinion at this point. Um, and I helped write the letter, and I appreciate Tom, if that's submitting edits to the letter, I really work hard, but sometimes, um, no any good writer knows what shouldn't be published, once they write it, keep it to themselves, so this might be an example of, we got it off our chest, we wrote it, put it on paper, and maybe we, uh, we keep it to ourselves, and, you know, if our community isn't actually as upset as we anticipated. So that's, that's how I feel at the moment, I don't know if, if it's worth sending the letter at this time.
I, I mean, I agree, um, I think hearing from, you know, the student body and hearing, you know, I, I had some teachers that reached out that were concerned, and I'd like to, you know, hear from them again, seeing, uh, after a week, and maybe next month, it's been a month, you know, maybe we'd have a better, like, you know, oh, she's actually terrible, but, you know, maybe it's, you know, the newness is worn off, but I, I'm, I would be comfortable waiting, not doing, so.
Yes. I would echo Beth's comment about waiting and seeing for a little while, I'm fine with that, I think we should revisit this and get more feedback from our student representative and maybe, um, our November session and see how it's going. After there's been more time, then we can also see if it becomes a greater issue, um, for enforcement in the buildings.
Okay, so, I think based on feedback, I don't think we need a motion or anything, um, even though this wasn't an action item, I, I think lack, lack of any kind of feeling to take action, we can add this to my next chairperson's report, um, that gives Dr. Beth some time to, we can send her edits to the superintendent. So then if we do review this letter again, they can be distributed in the same, say, I know Tom, you distributed yours, but if you, um, if you haven't already sent a, a doc, uh, to the superintendent, if you could, with your edits for the letter.
All right.
Did you? Okay. Okay, so, and if anyone else has any recommended edits, they want to, um, we can, you know, we'll, I'll leave it as a standing agenda item for our next meeting. If we don't take action on anything at our next meeting, then we just drop it, um, so we'll, we'll give it a month and see how things go after the first month of school. See if there's any additional things, or if, um, you know, I haven't seen anything though, in the newspaper or on Facebook, and usually when people are in head, that's the first place they go, or they come and provide public input, and the public input tonight was not what I anticipated, but it wasn't on this morning, so. Um, any other comments or discussion? All right, well, seeing none, then we can move on to the NHSBA delegation resolution, so, um, in our meeting packets, um, not in our meeting packets tonight, but our online packets and on the NHSBA website, there was a list of resolutions, um, for boards to consider if they wanted to endorse or support, um, I don't know if, you know, any board members have any inclination on any that our board feels like it would like to instruct me as our delegate to weigh in on, um, I think I get a pretty good pulse of what our board, how it feels, but if there's anything where the board wants to vote to instruct me to vote a specific way, um, this would be the time. Okay, um, if, any, yes, Dr. Beth?
There's a Mills one, I think you know that we're all in support of that, but I just would like to reiterate that I think it's great that that's being taken up by a broader, um, group within the state, and I would be in favor of it, I think we are in the vanguard on that issue.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I, sometimes it's one of those things where you don't necessarily need a motion, I think I generally understand how our board feels about public education, the welfare of our students, so, um, that's, that was a continuing resolution that, um, I voted for when I represented the board last year, um, based on, you know, feedback from the board that are leaving, so, um, to support, so I'll know to continue supporting that continuing resolution, and, um, if anyone has any feedback, if they need more time to review these things and they wanna just provide their thoughts to me, I will take them under consideration without any kind of direct directive from the board, I'll just use my best judgment based on that, so, Dr. Beth?
I did a question maybe for, for my colleagues, so, there was one resolution that was proposed, and I don't recall the school board that put it forward, but it was related to, um, putting limitations on, um, public dollars, so that if they were given to private institutions, that the institutions receiving those dollars would then be subject to the same uh, reporting requirements, um, as a public institution would be, and the, the SBA did not take up that resolution, so I guess there's, it probably won't even be discussed. But, um, this, this issue of, um, public dollars and co, and accountability in private institutions via the education freedom account seems to come up regularly, but there's not, I didn't see a continuing resolution from the SBA on that subject, and I, personally, I would be in favor of limitation, the school board association's position is that they will not, they will not make any kind of limitation on behavior and requirements related to education freedom accounts, because, um, they're, they're vehemently against them. Um, entirely, and they feel that any kind of, um, acknowledgement of their existence is a weakening of their position, which I think is an interesting position to take, um, I'm not asking for feedback or comment, I'm just putting it out there that that was, if you're looking through the continuing resolutions packet, or the proposed resolutions packet, it's in there, it wasn't taken up, it's worth reviewing.
Any other comments? Danielle?
So, I was trying to pull it up, but I can't, um, and it's not that important, but on the proposed resolutions, there's a number of them, they're like the first ones, there's a set discussing, um, like, school choice, um, in general, and so I do think, um, you know, I don't know if we as a board have consensus on those things, but it's come up regularly in our discussions, the impact of, um, you know, legislation that, like, for, just regarding school choice, I'm trying to think of, like, the best terms, terminology to use, but we've talked about how um, funneling money away from public schools puts a greater burden on taxpayers, so I would support the NHSBCA. I just added a C, like it's for animal R S P O, but you guys knew what I meant.
NHSBA, yeah.
Um, so like, any of that would be in support of, i- in terms of the organization moving in a, a direction that um, explicitly supports public schools, not that we don't wanna support students everywhere, but because we are hitting a crisis point, and Wolfboro will never be in a situation that Claremont is in. Um, but, I think we're reaching a crisis point in this state, and it would be silly to not take, you know, take maybe more rigid stands than we historically might have, if that makes sense.
Okay, so, I'll, you know, I think NHSBA stood pretty strong against, um, expansion of voucher, uh, systems or education freedom accounts, it's called in our state. I'll support their business, so, it's feedback, um, is there any other feedback? And again, feel free to, you can just directly send me an email if you have any feedback specific, I mean, they kind of organize it, if you look at their list of resolutions, they have a proposed resolution, NHSBA may sometimes offer a, um, you know, not recommend the ru, resolution, but an alternative that kind of meets the spirit of the resolution, or existing, um, priorities or policies of NHSBA, or, um, you know, things of that nature. And then there's continuing resolutions where body, um, so the school boards, you know, all the, we have one hundred sixty-five school boards that are members of NHSBA, of a hundred sixty-eight, I think across the state, if I'm remembering correctly, and it's two-thirds, um, are required to adopt a resolution three years in a row before it becomes part of the position of NHSBA, so. So, those continuing resolutions, unless something drastically has changed, I'd help probably just like supporting all the continuing progress. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead.
The, the, the only other one that I'll, I'll say anything about is the, um, I know that, um, we, in a, in our district area, and India built position where, um, open enrollment may actually, it may potentially benefit us, it would potentially send more students to the district, um, which would be additional revenue here, um, however, I thought that the resolution that's proposed this year from the school board association raised a number of really good points, and I certainly wouldn't want to, um, I would wanna, I would wanna support their proposal in opposition to open enrollment, because I do think it's unfair and unreasonable um, for the legislature to put a burden on the districts within the New, the full New Hampshire, um, body, to try to plan their budgets not knowing what their census is gonna be, and creating chaos, um, after the fact, after the fact that they've done their financial plan for the year, they then have to figure out how many kids they're gonna have in their classes, and this sort of mad scramble that open enrollment would create, so I am very sympathetic to the resolution as it was presented, even though it might benefit us as a district here, I don't think it's worth it to create all that pain in other places, where the planning is really es- essential for them for survival.
Okay, this is great feedback, so, I'll, you know, I think these are good, fairly good directives for me to understand when I vote on behalf of our board at the delegate assembly, and again, if you guys have any additional comments or input, I, you know, I'll, you know, take them under consideration. Act on behalf of the board of boarding, yeah, the delegates, it happens October, not twenty-fifth. But.
I thought it was October fifth.
First. Yeah, it's, it's October, cause October fourth is the fifth, so it's October sixth, um, so, you guys have until October sixth to provide. So, okay, um, anything else before I move on, if I wanna put discussion? Right, then we can move on to committee reports, um, first is academic affairs, Dr. Schechler, the floor is yours.
Academic affairs will meet next week, and we look forward to bringing you a new report in our next session.
Thanks. Thanks. All this is, yeah. Next time. And Effingham we can go over. You got lucky, maybe you'll have a short drive after all the policies. Um, Dr. Manning, buildings and maintenance.
Um, nothing much to report. I've, well, we covered the carpenter issue. I would say this, I have been out on the field and it's a bit like walking on marshmallows. Um, it's supposedly gonna settle down or something. It makes sense, it's all flushed up as far as you can go. So, if you walk out, a lot of the kids are saying they get really tired at the end of the game because literally it's like walking on marshmallows. But, who cares what they complain about if that's the case? They'll get stronger for it.
Is that the turf or the floor?
The turf.
Turf?
No, the turf. The, the, this is, what, one of the? Center.
No, it, it settles down and it, it's overtime just, just for kids wa- moving on. No, it's more like a balance, more like a balancing pad. Have a balance pad, Tom? More like a balance pad. Everybody have one of those? You can't move. You sit, if you stand long enough on the thing, literally you're gonna have to move. Because if you don't, you fall over. That's enough.
Does that conclude your report?
Yep.
Perfect. Uh, Nate, community relations committee.
Uh, yeah, we didn't have a meeting between now and Brookfield, but we did update Brookfield that, uh, you know, remind all the school members that we're gonna try to have a, uh, we are having a roundtable at the Effingham meeting with our, um, our PTOs. Um, so that'll be at five o'clock. So, that'll be before the, uh, non-public at, uh, Effingham. So, you know, come and, uh, you know, see what, uh, great ideas some of the, um, other PTOs have. We're trying to bring them together to, to, you know, to share ideas and see what we can do to keep those, uh, organizations robust. Um, that's kinda it. Um, I did have a non, not technically community relations, but I did meet with the Effingham selectmen. They invited me to come in a week ago, uh, a week ago. And I, you know, you know, suggest maybe you guys could reach out to some of your selectmen and meet with them. Um, we had some good, some, they had some great questions. So, I'm trying to set up a meeting with, uh, Kathy and, um, um, the superintendent, sorry, so that we can discuss. I don't have the answers. I said, hey, I know the people that have the answers, so let's talk to them. And, uh, but I had some great discussions with some, the, um, some community members after the meeting about questions they had and I s- you know, trying to, you know, obviously with the budget coming up, um, you know, um, trying to get, you know, being transparent and trying to get that message out to them is, you know, to show them, you know, all the things that we're doing in this school district, so.
Thank you for doing it.
Yep.
Very valuable. Uh, finance. Um, we are still, you know, I'm referring to starting the school year soon. You know, I know the building principals will be formulating their budgets with staff and they will be meeting with Kathy Doh and superintendent to finalize their budgets for what they'll present to the finance committee, um, mid-November. So, finance committee will have our budget hearings in mid-November and we'll go through our regular budget process preliminary hearing. You know, first, uh, first, you know, our December meeting and the January meeting will, will have our final budget hearing. Hearing on more, I hope so. Um, we'll get a better idea of what our costs are, um, as different bills come in and as different cost adjustments happen, contracts, ethics. Have to go out to bid with some, some listing services. And, um, after we finish negotiating, um, the, the teachers' union contract, which brings me to human resources. Uh, negotiations are ongoing and, um, and hopefully we will have negotiations concluded prior to our November board meetings. We'll have all those financials ready for the, uh, finance. Um, that concludes our committee report. I added to our agenda two non-committee reports. First is the Wolfborough CIP, Kirsten Berg. Didn't attend the meeting tonight, our Tuffenbrough rep, but she did call me, um, include me a little bit on the Wolfborough CIP. And we had nothing as a school district to present to Wolfborough for their CIP. Um, you know, we had large projects, we present them, um, so they were aware that they were coming up so they could, you know, plan it as part of their capital improvements, uh, plan. And, um, she's been attending those meetings regularly. The town of Wolfborough has just been doing their department head presentations and done pong bylaws of, uh, capital improvements plan committee to figure out if they're gonna put on the board and what they're gonna put on. So, they do a review every, so we have a non-voting round. Um, so if there's anything new that happens, Kirsten can probably, he'll listen at the next board meeting, but she told me there was nothing, nothing significant happening at this point. Um, also, Wolfborough Community Television. Mary, do you have any reports to provide to the board? You're our designated board member on their board.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am happy to build on the previous report, whatever meeting that was, when we addressed, uh, the fact, the fact that, um, WCTV is in dire straits because there was, uh, the funding through town of Wolfborough for equipment to replace the soon-to-be unsupported server. And since that time, the school board, the school board, I'm tired. Uh, the, the WCTV board has been working not only in monthly meetings, but during the week several times, uh, working with also members of the community who are not necessarily on the board to address, uh, ways to be inventive, um, not only for this year, but the years to come. And to that, we are working on a new model of this, uh, WCTV, sort of a rebranding to expand content over the top streaming, which is what the new server was going to support. A lot of grant applications, but because of, and we found out there was no money to, uh, replace the server, all of the grants, uh, are for next year, but they're, they're promising. We are getting a great deal of feedback from the community that, that WCTV is, is vital and valued, uh, not only for, uh, the government meetings and the school board meetings, uh, but also that which happens in the community. It's their, uh, opportunity to learn more, including the, um, Adrian's, uh,
Dan's.
Are very popular. And apparently, and because we can only calculate that, which is on YouTube as far as, uh, number of watchers, uh, that, that hits the roof. Uh, the cable company will not release its, um, protective information, how many people are still on cable. Probably could get a calculator out, figure that out. But this is because the franchise fees are dwindling because folks aren't on, uh, cable anymore, even cable isn't doing cable anymore. I've learned a lot in the last few weeks. But I encourage everyone who hasn't considered supporting, we are very dependent on sponsors and underwriters, uh, and community contributions, uh, to become independent of. And, and to clarify, uh, property taxes are not used to fund WCTV. It's intended to be from the franchise fees, which are going down about twenty percent a year. And, and then the rest is donations and grants and things of that sort. And the only, this is the only time the town stepped up to pay for this equipment. And because of the town's budget, we don't have. Thank you for your time.
Gary, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Gary, I heard some misunderstanding.
Tom, could you speak into the mic, please?
Sure.
I know.
Uh, Mary, I've heard some misunderstanding that you, uh, people think that they have to look for it on people's television channel. Uh, WCTV. But prove they can find it on, thanks, thanks, uh.
YouTube.
YouTube, thank you. I'm not sure everybody knows. No. I wish I did. I know how early you.
Any other questions?
Now, just add, it's such a very, very valuable piece of information. So, uh, because, uh, WCTV is in the communication business, uh, we are very much aware of, and being an educator as well, if somebody doesn't know something, we just need to find another way to share that information. Uh, so, awareness is a huge part of it as well. The end.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we're on to closing activities. Advanced planning. So, we have on September tenth, uh, what is it? Wednesday? This upcoming Wednesday, six P M is the K R M S, the Kingswood Regional Middle School Open House. On September seventeenth at five thirty, we have the Effingham Elementary School Open House. September eighteenth, five thirty P M, we have the Kingswood Regional High School, Lakes Region Tech Center, Open House. September twenty-fourth at five thirty P M, we have the New Durham School Open House. September twenty-fifth at five thirty P M, we have the Auscy Central School and the Tuffenbrough Central School Open Houses. October second at five o'clock P M, we have the Crescent, wait, oh, Carpenter School, sorry. The Carpenter School Open House. Um, and also on October second at six P M, we have the Crescent Lake School Open House. And on the sixth of October at six P M, we have our school board meeting in hand. Yes?
Uh, we mainly, the community relations committee would, um, appreciate if the PTO roundtable were added to this future meeting dates and events as it begins at five P M on the same date as the school board meeting in Effingham, if that's okay with me.
That's cool. We'll make sure it's on the pwrsc.org backslash calendar where you can see all these event details that are subject.
Thank you very much.
I don't think any of these dates are changing though. Um, that kinda concludes our upcoming, you know, things that are happening in the district. Uh, next is our public input, fifteen minutes, three minutes for individuals unless extended by a vote of the board. Is there any public input? No, no one wants to say anything? Okay. I guess that's not bad. Well, I'm not disappointed, but you know, they waited through the whole meeting. I don't know if they had any feedback for us. Um, well, I'll close the public in, before we adjourn, I just wanna say, um, the comments that started the meeting, the public input, I, I took, I took offense to the suggestion that this board is quote, lapdog, end quote. Um, and I just wanted to let you all know that I, I see the work that everyone does on the individual committees, the hours of work that are put on the committee level or outside of the committee's decision-making that's brought to the board, the robust discussion that's brought forward to the board, the evaluation of the superintendent, our employee and staff, the time that people take, the discussions that we have in non-public about that. Um, I think the people who are on this board are the people who care and wanna be on this board. You know, I think people have ample opportunity to run and I think most people on this board ran unopposed. Um, I hear regularly in our communities that the folks on this board, you, you probably hear it too, when you're on the school boards, people say, jeez, I would never wanna do that, what a thankless job. Right? So, I just really wanna stress, I, I have a lot of faith in this board and, you know, we, we have a newer board, but I think we have a fresher board that's more in tune with residents, with children in our schools that are passionate, that are taking the time, that requires to be a productive and good board member, supporting admin, supporting staff. And I really feel as if our board is poised to, to do a lot this year, to be the best board that we can possibly be. I feel that we're gelling together well, I feel that we're supporting each other. I feel like, you know, I feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of positivity and there's a lot of potential in the room. And to hear someone come forward, um, and to kinda suggest that we're just quote lapdogs just by following the law and doing our jobs the way that we're supposed to do it, I just, I think they're like the New England Patriots, right? Do your job, right? Just do your job, show the results, prove to people, you know, what you're able to do, prove to people that you're able to fulfill the duties and just let it speak for itself. So, that's just my, um, if you have something to say, Dr. Bett?
Yeah. I have a couple of things to say. One, I wanna say thank you to all of my fellow board members and to Brody for that, um, very kind endorsement. And I echo all the sentiments. It's a pleasure to work with all of you and an honor to be here. And I think this board has started the year and continued from last year in a positive way that the community also recognizes and appreciates. I also want to just clarify something that was said earlier this evening, that said that, um, it was mentioned that board members were not, um, allowed to have coffee with constituents. That's not true. You can have coffee with me literally any time. I might even buy you a cup. Um, I often talk to constituents in the community, I think we all do, and there's no preclusion on us speaking to members in the community. That's just not true. So, I just wanted to clarify that as a, a misconception from the gentleman who brought the issue forward. We talk to people all the time and that's why we're doing this. If we lived in a bubble, then it wouldn't, we wouldn't be very effective.
I, I couldn't agree. Thank you for, I nearly forgot about that too. That also really annoyed me that I regularly take calls from staff who are constituents or constituents, parents, legislators who reach out to me with questions about our district, who don't even live in the school district or represent member towns, meet with any local officials. And we have Nate Williams who's meeting with his select board and, you know, soliciting feedback and looking to build those connections. So, all of it without needing to go to the superintendent and ask her permission. She understands that's our role and we're members of this community. I think we all understand we answer to the voters. Um, I think we strive to represent the will of the voters to the best of our ability based on what they, we got the end of the meeting and based on what they like us to carry out as part of our constitutional duties. Thank you for mentioning that. Yes, Tom?
Dr. Jim.
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Jim.
One thing that wasn't mentioned earlier was the fact that things were a lot of stress in staff departments and the leading. What's interesting on this point is that a number of positions that have opened up over this past year are being filled by people returning from other positions in other districts. That tells me that we must be doing something right because why would they come back? There's no reason for them to come. If, if, if we're not describing them well, they wouldn't be here. These people come back gladly. They're happy to, happy to be here. Have problems when some people are saying otherwise.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Jim, 'cause I was, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mary.
I was leaning forward here.
I recognize I do.
You knew who I was earlier.
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't realize.
Oh, that's a joke. That's a joke.
I didn't realize you were speaking. I'm sorry.
So, my point, thank you for that. Uh, the, uh, going in among the schools and seeing the teachers and the hard work and the joy and love in their classrooms, I was at, uh, the Auscy, this open house kind of event, um, and I had to park across the street, down the street, and families were streaming in from all directions. Uh, and it, it just gives me chills talking about it. And I look forward to going to all the schools that I'm able to attend. And I know these teachers are working hard. And I just wanna double what you said, they're coming back. And to a person saying, this is my home and I'm part of the Governor of the Northern Regional School District family.
Mary? Yeah, go ahead.
Is this working? Oh, good.
It's working.
Um, I do think it's worth clarifying, you probably do a better job of saying, that there are legitimate reasons when we can't talk to people about specific things.
Yeah.
Um, if somebody is appealing a decision and we're gonna sit as the judge on that appeal, we can't be talking about both either side because we can, um, what's?
Biased.
Biased, right? And there, there are situations like that. And, uh, we're not allowed to independently investigate because once again, we become bi- biased. I know that, that's frustrating. They would like us to investigate things, but that's not within our, uh, responsibility. Big part of our responsibilities is, uh, passing policy, which reflects state law, so that everybody working in the district knows what rules they have to abide by. Anything on this?
I, I think, I think as Sarah Christina of NHSBA always says, our job is to ensure that the school districts, our job isn't to run the school districts, it's to ensure the school district is run well. We don't run it. We don't do investigation, staff, we don't handle personnel matters. We govern. And I think what you said, Tom, caps it as that. We, we govern, oversee the people who administer to it. And we're elected to govern. We don't manage. We govern. We establish policy, we present a budget to the voters. We oversee the superintendent. He's our own director, who, we evaluate. Um, as you mentioned, we adopt policies, you know, they are, are built to govern our district, so we kind of express our authority. And I think a lot of people, they have an issue with a teacher and they wanna call us, do this. And we go, um, that's a superintendent matter, that's a personnel issue. You know, and we, our job is to help direct them to the right people, to be the resource to help them navigate, you know, the institution that we govern, but not to, you know, step in for them and demand the superintendent does. We're powerless as a single entity, but as a collective, we're the school board that can We're powerless as the same, but as a collective or the school board that can make a collective decision on behalf of the students.
That being said, I'd be more than willing to talk with anybody that wants to talk with me about things I can talk about.
Great way to put it. Danielle, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just echo what Beth and Tom said both, that I'd be happy to talk to people too. I'm approaching a year, it'll be like my, the end of my first term this winter, and I have not received a single phone call, text, or email that was like individually to me about any personnel concerns whatsoever. And I'd be open to hearing them out and I would take it seriously, I'd take what we heard earlier seriously as well. I do feel compelled to be clear about that, that I've not heard a public outcry for an investigation or a survey. I have no concerns about Dr. Arkellian and her conduct. And people know where to find me and don't invite me anywhere. And I want to thank the people who sit for these meetings month after month because it is lovely to see that at least, you know, there are people here, there are people who will watch it on YouTube. So, I don't mean to denigrate those people in that participation, but like more participation would be lovely. I think it's important to remember that sometimes the loudest voices are those in the extreme minority.
Can it carry on to that? Judged by Dr. Beth, like judged by Dr. Jim, I think we've discussed enough, yeah, all the roles here.
Tom?
Yeah. Yes.
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 Hi. Where, Jerry?
Let's go home now.
The home bar.